For the second, Marshall County Community School District. While we interview the state, people at the table with me from the right have created this. From the left, I have Janet McGinnis, Mike Miller, and Sarah Paul. At the center table with me to my right is Paula Noble, she's the board secretary. And to my left is Dr. Derek Schuene, the school superintendent, and I'm the head lawyer. Welcome to all of you who are joining us tonight. It's good to see people in our audience even on your space apart. And welcome to those who will be doing this on the light broadcast or live stream tonight. If you would like to address the board under that part of the agenda, please sign up on the pink sheet on the speaker's table. You'll be given five minutes to speak during public comment. The board will not be able to respond to your comments, but we thank you for them. And your time with us this evening. Please report me, the Marshall County Community School District Division. We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset. This is a fully versioned, equal future reverse model experience. And standard year of course.
We have a few amendments to leave. We have a grant for resources to carry on our geotechnical engineering. For the tornado saved in the amount of fifty-four dollars to soil work. For the site for the progress trains as well as the home features. We have a special team, most Marshall. There's a grant from Central Orange Community Service, or Disability Services, in the amount of fifty-three thousand. Would approve now also. And the amount of thirty-five hours on the first. Church towards nurse needs and.
I have a motion to accept the agenda as. Miller Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Motion carries. Mr. Thivers?
Sorry about that. So, recommendations today, we're gonna start with Anita Elmore, who was a. Eleven. That group is connected to the church.
On behalf of the MHS, let's just define. We have decided no. In years, we were supposed to have our sixtieth issue, and because of COVID, we canceled it. And so we cleaned out our account. Which is one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-three cents. And we would like to present that to the high school viewers as receipt back.
Want to say thank you very much for your contribution from the. Crossed the country. I really appreciate all your support and. Of course, the challenges for COVID, COVID-19. And the spectators and the sponsors. Especially challenges at home, so this is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Well, I wish it was more, but every little girl.
Thank you.
So we also have with us Amber Gangl, from the Arts and Culture Alliance here in Marshall County. And Amber was, we were unable to get Amber for. For the Christian Maxine Memorial Project.
Thanks for having me. I'm the director, Amber Anderson, of the Marshall County Arts and Culture Alliance, the work of the. To help increase the awareness in school zones, this project came to life after the. This accident happened with Christian Johnson. So this is an effort to increase safety, awareness, education, self-identification, and also to. Arson and family. So, to date, we have completed Franklin, which we were able to complete first. And honor of Christian, that whole is a special name. It's blue, which is their color, and has a lightning bolt to honor their favorite, to their flash. So, that one's a special one. The remaining ones are a colorful often itself. A lot of pride we see, more information. The rest of them are severe, colorful. Meant to stand out, be bold, be vibrant. We, our intention is for it to hopefully literally stop kids in their tracks and. You know, as their entrance and exiting, excuse me, exiting with things. Because they're ready to cross through the intersection that made our friendly reminder that they should look forward with the messaging. Was chosen specifically because we felt like it's very universal, both family, students, staff, parents, but also the drivers. So the intention also means for us to have signs made and go throughout the school intersections and crosswalks. And the artist also created a. We intend to do that in our signage as well. So. We have completed to date, you know, Franklin, Rogers, and today the artist, and tomorrow will finish Woodbury. So that will complete fall twenty twenty, and then we will be doing some great work in the coming months in hopes to finish next year in summer. I'll hand it out so you can have your information. Thank you.
Thank you. I realize I didn't have me to, I skipped over. Where the full teacher. Marshall County, so the French teacher, what was all this here, was two. Teacher with. Rebecca. Rebecca.
So last March, just prior to the COVID closure, French two, French three, French and AP French students proceeded a national French contest for the whole. Other than every, they've been sponsored by our association of teachers of French. They also sponsored from National French, which is busy. And especially since I take on the government of the whole state, the High School French Association. I'm here tonight to present the national gold reward. To Rebecca Stone and a state college prize for being in the top three of the level. I have one hundred about four hundred students across all level, zero three five, three four. Rebecca placed second to the state level two and fifth in the overall national. Marshall County is even strong with a number ten in the state level for the second level, like Rebecca, eighteen national. And two others. And we also had an AP and state level four, raised ninth to state.
Rebecca, if you have anything you'd like to share with the board?
Final question, speaking on the other side of the stage, it's going on here on June eleventh. It's actually happened to be like my one year anniversary, also. Veteran's Day, I'm just. My first year, I was going there in the building. Uh, and you signed cards to veteran staff, so we named them there. All of our folks are named there. And you see it's true. Various branches of our.
Thank you. I will open the hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately ten million school structures, sales services, tax, road funds. Anyone here to speak up for that? Do you have any comments come forward? I will close the hearing on proposed issuance of ten million dollars of funds. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from anyone? Are there any items of note personnel? There are none. Looking at integrations through three months, we have a number. Of agreements and contracts that were added. We have a random of understanding, plus underlying of many services. For funding mental development and disability services. For coronavirus-related expenditures. We have an amendment with the workforce to include secondary, going in contact and logic. We have one gen ed student. To Mason City. And we have seventeen special education. Are there any questions? We have no open enrollment. Any items of noted bills? Looking at this grants and requests, we have a donation from Marshall County class of nineteen sixty, which is. We have a grant for the Spirit Valley Tenement, in the amount of ten thousand hours. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda presented? I am in. All of favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. You know, it is on the sheet? Let us move on to the giveaway. The new board director to fill the seat of director. Uh, I'm T.
Unfortunately, the board approach was like. My fullness, uh, as in the G D A class. Strong recommend. Words consideration improving. He goes appointment for the coming year. His position had to go petitions for special election. After being the starting ten in the Congress. Charlie had the last. Uh, Nino had gone through every process with the board. When we have a last appointment to replace Ross Sherpas, and he chose. Those. For reflective election, not to be selected, so. He's very excited about this again. So I'm going to vote for the next year.
I have a question. I have a motion to Nicholas Get ready to as. The board director to fill the vacancy about Monty. I give to Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Motion carries.
I'm fairly confident, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent. Confident in stating that because in order for us to not be on the budget guarantee next year. We would need an increase in supplemental state aid of two point seven percent. And I don't think that that's gonna happen. Um, I think it's, it's pretty safe to say that we're planning next year. With the non-budget guarantee. And what is the budget guarantee? Um, this is a mechanism within the finance board that is designed to provide a cushion for school districts. Who are experiencing those declining enrollment numbers. It's triggered when, when the decrease in your student enrollment. Um, is not offset by the increase in the supplemental state aid or the, the per people spending that we get every year for each student. But the decrease is more than the increase. And that puts us on the budget guarantee. You may recall, we were on the budget guarantee last school year for fiscal twenty, and then we came off. But this year, because of that recovery that we experienced in enrollment, which was good. Um, it's really fortunate, you really don't want to be on the budget guarantee for two or more consecutive years. Because that is very painful budget guarantee. You then get into situations where you actually have negative new money. So we hope to only, again, we have the budget guarantee for one year, and then maybe next fall, hopefully experience another recovery. We're gonna be having several conversations over the next four months or so regarding decisions that have a potential impact on the property tax rate. One thing to note about the budget guarantee is that it is one hundred percent funded by property taxes. The other thing, you know, we've been working on increasing our solvency ratio over time. Also, at the last meeting, we talked about our special education deficit. That special ed deficit is also funded by property taxes. We did see an increase in that special ed deficit going into next year, from last year going into next year. The other thing that's funded entirely through property taxes is the early retirement liability. I think the district has offered that early retirement liability nine out of the last ten years, I believe. And so this is funded by property taxes. And we currently have just under a two million dollar liability out there for those early retirement incentives.
So typically, this time of year, November, we'd be considering whether or not to offer the voluntary early retirement. Still not knowing what SSA is going to be, but we have a pretty strong belief that we'll be lucky to get one percent. There's a high probability that we'll be going on the budget guarantee, as Paul had mentioned. And we're going to have significant potential complications for the property tax rate due to the special ed deficits. Our intention will be likely for the November sixteenth meeting to recommend not offering it this year, the voluntary early retirement incentive. Just a couple other points. This year with COVID, as Paul had mentioned, seems eerily similar to the post-tornado situation we had of the eighty-six point five deficit. Thirty-eight of those were students that were with us at home school. It's about two in virtual or want to come back. We know that JBS, for example, lost a number of employees, maybe upwards of two hundred at the initial onset of COVID in the Plamen situation there, which is very similar to what happened after the tornado when people lost homes and had them damaged. They just left and went to other places with other people to live and work and that sort of thing. And I have a general sense, although I don't know for sure that we had some of that same phenomenon happen that many of the families that didn't come back we haven't had contact with since way back in March when we initially went into closure. As Mike pointed out, I'm thrilled that for the fourth year now, we've had a decline in the enrollment out. I thought it was odd that we had a decline because we have had a slow increase also in the enrollment in. So we're working with the district registrar to investigate that a little bit more to see what the circumstances are there that led to that. Interesting, you know, just the whole year's gonna be interesting in terms of the impact of COVID as far as the budget and such. And so I just don't think it would be responsible to purposely take on more tax liability when that even clear what kind of impact we're gonna have. But that's what we're seeing, as well as the budget guarantee.
And just to put that in a little bit perspective, right now with current valuations, which we don't know what next year's budget valuations are going to be yet. But with current valuations, the cost of the budget guarantee is about fifty-four cents per thousand. The special ed deficit increase over the prior year is, we have another fifty to fifty-five cent impact per thousand.
We haven't seen the average budget yet either.
Right, right, yep. So, you know, what does this mean for our district? Basically, we want you to be aware that there are several decisions that we will be discussing in upcoming meetings and talks regarding different pieces of the budget. And so there are a lot of things this year that are highly, that could have an impact on the tax rate that I would suggest. What questions do you have for me right now?
Another way to think this, that we're gonna have a potential or a five percent increase probably now.
Potentially, it all is dependent on what taxable valuations do. You know, if your taxable valuations go up significantly, that will help affect that. The other big discussion that we will be having during the board work session is the potential to use an interim surtax to alleviate some of the pressure on the property tax rate. So, yeah, there's potential for this to have an impact. The other thing that we also, you know, won't know until we do our forecasting is how much, if anything, we can do to improve our solvency ratio. We're still below that eight percent minimum. You know, during years when you have other items like this that for themselves, you might want to back off on that solvency ratio goal, on the fee ratio goal below that. There are just a lot of moving parts and pieces to the budget. I wish it were as simple as just saying, yeah, the tax rate's gonna go up a dollar twenty, but we hope not.
Dollar twenty. That would increase the increase in the area. So, a hundred thousand dollar house, that's...
That's a little back now, fifty some percent.
Fifty thousand, five by thousand, fifty-five dollar twenty. I think about the number, every hundred thousand dollars valuation is traditional fifty, seventy-five dollars. That's what happens.
And we can do some modeling when we get to that point, too, for that.
We can see how many beverages that means. We'll see how many beverages that will be. Other questions for Paul, Adam, Dr. Chudin? Just an informational discussion for you at this time. We don't have any student board representatives, so we won't have a student board representative update. Moving on to the equity committee. Dr. Ryan is listing those individuals listed to participate on the equity committee for the 2021 school year. I believe they've already met once. Are there any questions regarding the names on that list? Have a motion to approve the equity committee members as presented? Paul, the indictment, on paper, signify by saying aye. Aye. Close the same. Motion carries six to. We're going to move our books that you just handed in just before policy is so that we can... Listen to what Kevin has to say here quickly. Get him on his way in the dark. Do you want him to?
Paul, I'm beginning to do the resolution.
Yeah, so this is in regards to the public hearing that happened at the beginning of the meeting, but I would recommend approval of the resolution. We are recommending approval of the resolution to support the issuance of approximately ten million dollars in same tax service in fact, that we want to support the project. Anything that's gone down regarding high school, H-Tech project, and qualifications at Anson. And the tornado safety room is actually now part of this. But that's a grant.
Okay. Then we have a motion for supporting the post- issuance of ten million school equipment for your sales services. Hello, Fernandez, on paper, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same.
Okay. Let's start with the high school. The design estimate for the high school project, this is a summary.
Can I get you to speak into the mic a little bit more?
Gotcha. I'll get me into it. So this is a summary page compared to the conceptual design budget that we started with, starting with, which was about seven million dollars. This project now is, it's around six million dollars. And the reason for that is we found some efficiencies in some of the work that we're doing, and less ceilings have to come down. And because less ceilings come down, that means less clean ceilings back up and less potentially painting and repair. So it's very low on the ductwork side and a lot more on the piping side. So we have large chitter. If you scroll down to the bottom of this page, you'll see that total project cost right there, a pool at five million, nine forty-one. That's our current total project estimate. We do have two alternates identified as well. I do note that the fire sprinkler alternate, previously we said you could probably do most of the areas that were adding air conditioning to, for about eight hundred thousand. Well, the one other, the one million that we're not going to spend on the air conditioning project would be required to be spent if we decide to do a fire sprinkler project. Because it would be tinging down those ceilings, adding the fire sprinklers and then putting them back up. The LED lighting project is a much easier project. You don't have to take ceilings down, you can swap out line fixtures, one for one. We are recommending that you do pursue the LED lighting project because it will pay for itself. It's only between two point eight and three point two years. So it's gonna reduce your operating cost. And I just told a conversation about operating budgets. And if that can reduce that, that's a good thing. But we're recommending that you not pursue the fire sprinkler project. It's not required, the cost is more than four to do that. As a matter of fact, you can save about a hundred thousand dollars by not having us design it. We have not started that design because we found insufficient ways to do evaluation. So that is one decision we're gonna ask you to tell us. Don't spend a hundred thousand dollars to design that fire sprinkler system. It's not fair. And in fact, it's on, scroll up just a little bit. There you go, off the line thirty-four. You'll see that's the design freedom to design the alternates. And that fire sprinkler, it's a hundred thirty-five thousand from the start of design to the end of construction. And you can save all those dollars. If you follow our recommendation, how to do that. So this is really good news. Overall, we're pretty comfortable with this pricing. And overall, the only major kind of ceiling work that we are recommending is in the pool area. Recommending that whole ceiling systems and all the lighting and all that come out because of all the issues that you've got in the pool and all the chlorine and chemicals that you've got in the pool area. That's still a lighting need to be replaced. So consider this budget, and that's kind of the main architectural renovation project. Close, patching some of those, and doing some painting. There's still a lot of pipe that's just for ceiling. This is the most important part, the cost and the measurement of that. Yes?
For something that is not needed, because it's not required, so we need a non-need it. So we need another base seat, you know what I mean? It's like there's just gray, red light for me, like what?
Fire sprinklers are not required in buildings. More recent building codes have made it more cost effective to put fire sprinklers in new buildings because of the cost of all the fire alarm systems and fire ratings and things that you don't need to do if you don't want sprinklers there. Because this is an existing building, and you have a full fire alarm system in the building. You are not, you do not need to put fire sprinklers in by code or for safety reasons. Any other questions?
Tell you all, it's, there's a microphone ringing. No, it isn't. Does it make a big difference in insurance costs if you have sprinklers?
I can't give you the answer solidly. Like, we don't receive any notices or any...
Typically, when we work at school districts, if the entire district has fire sprinklers, they typically see a say there's a chance. You are a long way from being a fire sprinkler. So that would be... I don't believe it.
Other question?
Okay, let's move on then to Anson. We'll look at the cost estimate, and then we'll look at the floor plans here. So this is the summary page of the detailed cost estimate. Go ahead and scroll down. So this project is, has gone the other way. This cost has gone up a bit. I think we were at two point two, two point three with our conceptual design estimate. The primary reason for this is because we are adding some walls. You can go to the floor plan attachment for this one.
I thought it was because of these windows.
Oh, small.
That's, yeah.
Way to let it mention.
Okay.
I would like to be able to cut the ribbon on that one.
Some of you have spent more time with Anson Elementary than others, but as you know, the north section of that building is an open plan design. They're not building the walls. As a matter of fact, a lot of classrooms in the middle. They've got some furniture, there's some temporary partitions, but they're pretty much open to media center, there's no corridor. So the walls and doorways that are shown here, the room are gold. The walls and the doors that can open on the way ninety degrees, those are primarily the new doors and the new walls. So dividing these rooms up. And as we do that, we have to update and replace the fire alarm system. Especially, it's also kind of compounded because we're totally changing the HVAC system in Portland. So it's not a fire sprinkler, but it is a fire alarm system that's adding maybe a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the year. That has increased the cost. That has increased the cost. We also talked about a number of pieces of equipment that will be on the roof. In a previous concept, a couple of weeks ago, we had Hanson that had a lot of arguments on the roof. Now we have fewer arguments on the roof. Because of that, it was going to require changing filters and potential future maintenance. And we talked about adding a stair. Scroll up on the plan just a little bit. In the upper right of that plan, you see a little outdoor stair. That was a plan that was still offensive about it. That's included in our budget estimate right now. And Todd will tell you that if you have that stair, there's going to be much to maintain on the roof. But if the number of pieces of equipment on the roof actually gets reduced, he may not feel that's as important. The only roof access right now is a tiny little hatch in the upper loft. And a little room called Chase, that's a little bit larger than the wall. And you can see a little old, kind of driver's spot, a tiny little hatch. You have to carry some tools and some filters and things like that every once a year would be a problem. So that's, those are the reasons why this price was getting up. But as you can see, we have provided much nicer rain, water to these rooms. It's been a fight I was meeting with the principal this afternoon. He has been reading the teachers about outdoor locations, fall locations, and projectors and markers and so on. So we're making some very important assumptions here. It's a fact simple as we change it already. And we do have included the alternate for window replacement on the south elevation. At a hundred and eighty thousand dollars is a conservative number. Because as we're looking at the uniform larger symbol of plastic there, we may not have to replace all the panels and all the louvers that are between those windows. So the windows, the panels, the louvers, you know, that's basically going from the rock all the way to the roof. If we only had to replace the windows, it's about less money than replacing everything. But right now, that's kind of what we're going to have is. Between, I had to look at eighty thousand dollars for that window replacement cost. So the six million and two point eight, two point five puts us at eight point five. We add the L E D lighting. Nine point three, if you had louvers on there, you're still under nine point five. And that's well below, I think, the nine point seven that we talked about. So that's where these are at. Any questions on that Anson school budget?
So I guess I just have a question when I'm looking at.
Hold the mic towards you.
Start for line, that's the wall that we do.
Yes.
So that means to me it's going to be enclosed and we'll always go out.
Yes.
Maybe you're trying to decrease the size by doing that.
Well, that's a really good question, because right now, that kind of serves as a quarter already. There's no furniture in that area because of circulation path. So we really don't think it's decreasing size much at all. There's a, there might be, actually a little extra space on the west side. You can shift over from the plan over to the, so you can see the west side of the north side. The, the pathway goes all the way through now. And we're not allowing the pathway to go all the way through because we're adding walls in the room of classrooms. And we have to get to the upper left of the plan.
Did you take out the door?
No, I won't do that.
Where are they?
I knew the right plan, I knew the right plan open. We just need to get to the upper left of that plan. There you go. Slide that down so we can get to the upper left of the page. Now, now, we need to go to the upper left of the page if we can't see. Slide it over to the right. It's not the easiest.
Are you trying to see that part where you talked about having a little hatch?
Yeah. There you go. There, okay. So right now, there is a pathway. Basically goes from that vestibule on the upper left, straight down to that classroom that is kind of cut off. And so we are probably, it's probably about a wash on the scriptage. You can see the existing columns there. And those kind of form the corridor between the furniture, the needs center, and the classrooms. And the building walls run along those columns. So it's going to, it's going to be a smaller, but the footprint is really not any smaller.
I like it.
Right, it's ecstatic, I can't even see you here. I'm not, well, I didn't think of the teachers in particular, but we walked in each room, the teachers that we never had. Of all the distractions that they deal with. This will be totally new since.
The whole building?
Yes.
Will it be the same as what the high school was for, the same way?
Yes.
Take their base, your other activity like.
Right. He's just my guy, we're putting him on the.
I want you to pay for that.
Okay, any more questions about Anson? So what is the new ceiling lights, the new carpeting, and those are in that north section? But we're not making any real changes to the other. Okay, the tornado safe room then. Yeah, pull that, pull that up first, the schematic design. So tornado slate safe room slash two rooms, this is the total plan. It is approximately forty feet wide by two hundred feet long. Top of the page, you can see those are faces east of the stadium. So the door across the top, there's a meeting room. There's a concessions, there are public restaurants. Between the public restaurants, there are two officials, locker room spaces, a bathroom for women. And two corridor for emergency communications equipment, genital, kind of a first aid room in the middle. And the past side is a very large mechanical room. That is full of things like emergency generator, water heater, H V A C. It all has to be contained. So this is the kind of project where you put anything outside the building, it's going to be inside. And then across the bottom, there's a wait, a waiting team locker room. With restroom, shower, and a little training room space on the other side is the home locker room on the south restroom. And a connection to a training room. All three of those trainings are connected by doors, so you could get through each of those rooms that have the emergency.
But it is important to know that this, this, this plan would only be done if it appears successful in receiving the theme grant, which would be eight or eighty-five percent. All of this is sort of done in advance.
Yes.
And in order to submit the grant, you have to have the plans to price on the assessment complete to be considered. And then you have to award it the grant, you have up to three years to actually construct it.
Right, and we're, we're about thirty-five percent complete with that right now. So we're getting pretty close, more than halfway there. There are more pages in this drawing, I think you can go up. Now in that same. So this is kind of a first blush of what the massing of the building might look like. We're talking about putting in a precast factory panels. Because it will be more efficient structurally and it will be wrecked, wrecked much more properly than a factory block building, for example. It will be easier for us to meet the structural requirements that FEMA requires for holding the building together. And we're looking at different ones to do graphics, which you can take a good sense of the scale of the building on a bit. There's a little page, keep going down. These are all interior elevations, just to kind of show what it is. What looks like inside. And those show black, but they won't be temporary black. Well, some of the interior walls are temporary black, actually. Just not proven at all.
What is this building?
This building is outside the fence on the west side. Basically kind of perfectly centered on the football field. So you have the stormwater retention pond, which some people call the ditch. Just to the west of the building. And we probably have to fill that in somewhat to create the pad that we need for this building. We didn't technically make it any wider than that forty feet.
Will we meeting with the city to talk about? And what may need to be considered to be done in order to make this happen with the fire protection.
We have a development meeting with the city on Friday to go over many topics with every city partner. It's going to be a little long piece. Okay, um, you have any questions?
A lot of things that we talked about, I know was possibly creating a retention area similar to what we created for the tennis court complex. Of the northern west corner of the practice. So the northern, in Austin, the northern, the most prominent, what we call the ban law there.
So the total project budget for this is right around two point seven million. Even at fifteen percent, it would be a scary question still. We give investment, but it's already turned out eighty-five percent of funding. Normally, if it wasn't a FEMA structure, it would be probably considered two point two. But all the FEMA requirements for the H V A C systems, emergency generator, emergency communications corp, that is really driving this cost up. So it is a little higher than what we thought was going to be a few weeks ago, and we had a conceptual budget for it. And we initially created this budget a couple of years ago, we did the master plan for the whole athletic complex. Any questions on that?
I mean, it's like the team room part of this is the one thing that we significantly lack. Most other facilities have a place for teams to get out of the elements, you know, at halftime or pregame or what have. The other thing that we have asked the board to prove one of those soil boardings was the home lechers, which I would say of the whole stadium, the home lechers and the press box are probably the greatest. Media or near future need of attention and care. But our thoughts are that, you know, depending on how this plays out, if we are able to get the grant, then we can take the board. If what I think that you like, the home lechers, what we want to do on the front end, maybe for better, we are trying to. Or depending on the best, it was more, you know, here to just try to get it done. But, but it can't happen in pieces, it could happen team room stamp wall, lechers stamp wall. Just wanted to do it with the end in mind in terms of a whole stadium renovation project. What happens to the existing, the existing concessions and team buildings? We would still maintain the concession part of that for baseball softball, for sure. Then we have to take a look, yeah, some of that could be on storage potentially.
We're actually very low on restrooms. That's what we found when we did the master plan, we got a whole lecher, it seats thirty-two hundred people. Six or seven fixtures, we got bathrooms, really do not accommodate that. Probably have long lines at your events. And honestly, the team room space, that's a big issue, it's full of tools and equipment. And it's just got to clear that over to any of us, like. It's, it's for.
What I was thinking, you know, you concession, concession stand, frankly, for team, concession stand for all way. West, we're long. Second area, you're walking farther to concessions.
Baseball, a lot of that. Yeah, I mean, the upside of that is that it'll be not quite, but almost equal distance for home visitors to have access to both those restrooms. And, you know, it's no longer that they use the sheds for concessions for playing on the north side just because you're finding more crews, it's a lot of work. So, yeah, you're correct, and to Kevin's point, you probably never have the restrooms to be used. Maintaining the restrooms, maintaining the concession. Continuing, because I think there'll be the four additional storage, probably a conjecture. And those home lechers as well, because right now, a lot of the stuff is kept in that more building. That's the east of the softball, but in fact, that's what's used for home team room right now, which it might be. Other question? I don't know, is there a mistake? Can you talk about the drawings at high school?
We, we sure can.
On this, I don't think I missed.
No, no, we didn't. They're all engineering and usually, a few schoolboys, they don't be too excited. So the third attachment, the chemical S V. In that plan? No, I, I thought I, I'm like. No, I don't think you opened it yet. You didn't open it yet. So the, there you go. Up there. Okay. These plans and the keys that are different colors talk about the different things that we want to have. So the walls, the current locations, current location has cooling in. There's no additional work required, glue on, cooling to be added, agreed on, it's just to be only unit bed layers. So some spaces are classrooms, some are shops, those are mobile outdoors, there's a little bit of an addition in. There, there are some places that have kind of a different strategy going on. So these are the lower shops in this plan. The chill is outside of this, outside of this. So those chill are pipes that come in and run along the ceilings of those shops. And then go up into the other classrooms. And the shops don't have ceilings in them, so we don't take ceilings down for those pipes. It's been a lot of weight there. You scroll down to the next plan. Okay, now we're in kind of the dormant area, the classroom, all the classrooms. Again, tenant spaces are being treated immediately, green is primarily in classrooms. We have, through the use of unit ventilators, so we're replacing the unit ventilators. I didn't mention it earlier, but we are in conversation with Lennox. And their representatives to specify, base our specifications on some of their products. Now, they won't be, the only product specified would be that unit for people, as many as other final manufacturers. Because Lennox is talking about providing very competitive, cost-effective contributions. So we're recording any unit ventilators, so about eight thousand. So they're recording any unit ventilators, so about eight thousand dollars apiece. In the high school project, they are all in a handsome project. So there could potentially be some savings, we're judging a little bit of savings in a conceiving approach. On, on the project. So that's given the strategy here, those little brown boxes of unit ventilators. And you go to the next plan. Probably the upper level there shows that.
Why depend on that? The greenish classroom, we're getting here, what's happening with the brownish?
Can you zoom in to like where the chill is in the corridor there, up there? So the brown is, the current location is cool, always noise on the roof. Several other spaces already have cooling. Computer line, these are spaces like that, office spaces, they have cooling. The blue, the coolness we had, uh, via unit ventilator or a full amount of green, existing heating only. Uh, unit ventilator to be moved, and that's really cooling, unit ventilator. And the cooling will be provided by the refrigerator. And then also one existing unit ventilators that are being replaced, that's just chilling for the other ventilators on the way in. So it's reconceptions, very schematic at this point. That's why I think you're drawing sort of like a schematic design phase. Other questions for Kevin? Um, Dr. Green?
So the action that we're asking the board to take is to give approval for FTH to move on this schematic design phase and to the design development phase of the project. I want to thank Kevin, they're working really hard, I know, to position each of these projects. I wanted to say from the timeline that he had shared with us to be in a position to go to bed in January. I think they were, they were in time frame of the tomato state room. We need to be in a position to spend that grand application by the end of December.
Hey, I have a question. Will you approve this schematic designs presented and authorized FTH to proceed into the design development phase of the project?
Who would?
I think Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
I don't.
Oppose the same?
I have, uh, three summary booklets with all the information. Todd has one, there are the two, and then just a site sheet.
Right here.
Thank you very much. On that, who would like to review it, maybe?
This school district is part of consortium, but we were told that from what we do here, we're setting a program and annually, um, we can communicate requests being permissioned to submit to the school to review committee the administrative costs of this consortium. Definitely be around one thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars for the year. No, it's perfect. Perfect. Pardon?
One would say, fine, or have second to find her name. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Dan still has her help.
Are you now, is that right?
Yes.
So one of the things that been asked was for each of the board members to kind of share a takeaway that they have from reading a file that we passed for the last two weeks now. Three.
It became clear that my initial. Thought A to B approach to changing our schools was naive, at best. It wasn't formed by my experience in the private sector, where affecting structural change was a straightforward internal affair with no need to engage meddling outsiders in a protracted conversation. Of course, what should have been obvious is that when it comes to public schools, an argument could be made that there are no outsiders. Everyone's an insider. The people of the community pay taxes. They elect the governing board. They have opinions and they express those opinions on social media, in the press, at the coffee shop, at the grocery store, and at the ballot box when we ask them to pass upon. To be clear, this insider status does not give the people of the community the right to micromanage how their educators do their jobs. That is a step too far. But it does give them considerable control over the structure and direction of their schools. Now, acknowledging this does not take us off the hook. The times demand that we end the selecting and sorting race. But to change the system, the only system of education that most Americans have ever known, requires us to go deep into the community's cultural core. In other words, to get from A to B, we must go through C. And we must go deep enough into C to influence the hearts and minds, thoughts and actions of the people who ultimately control our schools. This, of course, brings us back to the four prerequisites of progress, starting with understanding. And to move forward, the first thing that the people of the community need to understand about their schools is their history, which, coincidentally, was the thrust of Episodes three and four. You may recall that showing the public how our system of education started and how it has changed over time helps to challenge those mental models of real school that can retard in progress. Explaining the choices that our ancestors made to get us the schools we have today facilitates a discussion of where we need to go. And there's another thing. Increasing public understanding of our history can help to overcome an obstacle that I have yet to mention. The debilitating mental disease that I call nostalgia. Come on, say it after me. Nostalgia. Fifty percent nostalgia, fifty percent amnesia. Simply put, nosthenics are certain that the schools of their youth were far superior to the schools we have today. Their motto is, if we could just have the school we used to have around here, everything would be all right. I've encountered this issue so many times that I've developed an equation to quantify the severity of the affliction. A times O equals NQ. A represents a person's age, O, number of years here she has been out of school. Multiply these two together and you get NQ, the nostalgia quotient. For example, if the person is fifty-five and has been out of school for thirty-seven years, this nostalgia quotient is two thousand thirty-five. The higher a person's NQ, the more advanced the disease. A person with a nostalgia quotient of a thousand will exhibit mild symptoms, but he will still be open to reason. Contrast that with someone with a nostalgia quotient of three thousand or above. He is likely to be a pompous ideologue, whose convictions about the glorious past put him beyond rational thought. Take my neighbor, please. In calculating your nostalgia quotient, you need to know that there are mitigating and aggravating factors. If you work in a school or you volunteer in an meaningful way, you can usually divide your NQ by two. If, on the other hand, you're in politics or you work in higher education, then you multiply by two. For almost two hundred years, nosthenics have been claiming that the schools of the past were superior. But I will be darned if I can find out when. Twenty years ago, in the New York Times, Lou Gerstner, CEO of IBM, proclaimed that our schools today are broken. Forty years ago, the Educational Testing Service found college freshmen woefully ignorant of basic American history. Fifty years ago, Life Magazine proclaimed failing schools were the reasons the Russians feasted in space. Eighty years ago, sixty percent of Navy pilots with a high school diploma failed the fourth grade math test. Ninety years ago, United States Office of Education found that social promotion was common. A hundred and thirty years ago, incoming freshmen needed remedial courses in reading, writing, science, and math at four of five America's colleges. Eighty percent. And in that year, eighteen eighty-seven, only the top three percent of high school students even went to college. We're talking about a significant portion of the crandala crand needing remediation. Now, every nosthenic has a rationale to support his or her beliefs. But the record clearly shows, looking to the past is futile. And besides, when most people say, I wish we could have the schools we used to have, what they really mean is, I wish we could have the America that we used to have. And whether or not you were striving to have rosy retro view of our past, those days are not coming back. And one last mission. The next time you encounter someone arguing that we should go back to the schools of our past because it was okay for me, it'll be okay for these kids. Follow my lead. Smile, open the eye, and say, sir, isn't it obvious? Whatever you got was not okay for you. Totally.
This series is based in part on the premise that we must replace the selecting and sorting process.
Who would like to start with their, what really intrigued me?
Well, I thought as I read it, I, who's the teacher, oh, my Lord, she had one of them. Probably the person, oh, with every strength is a weakness and every weakness is a strength. And part of the strength of public education, it is a common experience, it's something that ties our society, get up almost everyone we know. But that awful weakness is I went to ten different public schools and there wasn't much difference between them. And I was in four different states, changed schools every two years. The fact is that public school experience, that thing that ties us together, it's difficult for us to change because we really only have one picture of where we are. And it's hard to move away from that. And it's a cultural identity and people will fight with it. And I think that world case in point would be this whole business of the shutdown and how it affects high school sports. We closed classrooms that kept kids going to practices because we couldn't even comprehend the idea of not having high school sport. The cultural part, huge attempt. And I, I just thought, if I really broke all of the classes, I'm not.
So, uh, my, um, instruct me with chapter ten, fifty-four, where it talks about inspiring student fascination. Not that it was. Development lesson plans that students care about, so they need to learn. The original struck me yesterday, of all days, I, I happened, I was visiting with one of your high school teachers and family or senior sciences. And they were talking about the assignment that they had given their students. And the assignment was, uh, developing a business plan for a food truck. They had to determine what food they were gonna make, what the name of the business was, how they were gonna get the truck, how they're gonna decorate the truck, where they're gonna park the truck, how they're gonna staff the truck. You know, how their, what expenses were, and the entire business plan around developing a food truck business, which I thought was pretty cool. And would kind of teach kids.
Think it's applicable. Anything else?
Even I saw it just a little bit in a video, what struck me was, I mean, two and a half pages, one through the end of, you know, nineteen eighty-six. Article about how schools were working in nineteen eighty-three, nineteen seventy-six, sixty-nine, and all the way back to eighteen hundred, three thousand seventy-nine. When a Harvard professor says the high school teacher should be able to teach young people, right, the professor supports you to do your job. And this is never ending cycle of tools are apparently not as good, but the school life. Now, that was what really hit, hit me the most of that, those three main things.
That was one and one. But I have two. So that struck me, and I like the highlight, I mean, but, you know, I'm like, what's the same thing in every, like, so often, always something to say about the time. What you just said about, like, four, like, four, yes, before, they were saying the same thing here, same now, so. Kind of just write a wrong answer, but then. Um, chapter twelve, as short as it was, um, it was something that not struck me because I just feel like that's something that we see and I've heard, um, I see it more than I used to, how involved our community is and how big of a impact it has. Not only our funding, but your input and your staff, a lot of our history. And that's kind of like our, other ones, like our fans, our audience, and most of the time because they're the ones that are speaking now and standing up for us. And it's so, to me, it's so important for us to provide information to those that are the ones that support us and a lot of the times the ones that provide a lot of support. And they're, so, um, community definitely got one, that's your A D M, you know, what our, our.
I would agree with you, um, of a community, and seeing it play out in our community, what you asked us. Um, the book, the driving power, you have to have community backing, community. The schools, and we were forced into changes of capital, of how many months, being pushed back and the fight, and the community, the funding, the cost of having safety. And then the whole case gets made, maybe things, a lot of them.
And something that occurred to me, and I probably shook the curtain when I was reading it, but it actually occurred when I saw the video. When I started teaching, we were told if we could get our students to the fourth grade reading level, they would be functional. And when he talks about military, my dad had stories about how he teaches. The people under have to redefine what they're doing. So what we were told, if you get students to fourth grade level reading, they would be functional. Then a few years later, we were at fifth grade level. Before I retired, it was fourth grade level. The student, what we expect people to be able to read now is much higher than it was four years ago. And, and our educators are reading this challenge, which we need to handle that.
Join our list. Sure. Um, you know, I thought it was interesting early on, and I think it's chapter eleven, more.
where it starts talking about the interaction of computer thinking. Who's someone who's well known for system thinking and a business model, and how he thinks about schools as, you know, an integral system approach. But we're so ingrained in what we do that it's almost impossible to change the system and how it actually underpins what we think we know and what we've done for so long. of what we think we know and what we've done for so long.
I tried to talk about how it was about those gate points, changing, figuring about the end, you, um, that really, I realized, I calculated it, um, as I've been reading it, I think I have used under two hundred, so, hopefully that's pretty good. I do have to say, that, uh, the.
That's because you're very young.
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying, um, so, so, but, I mean, I have to say, the comparison to have graduated earlier last decade, you know, back then, we're doing coding, we're doing, we're growing up on something like that, with kids who are in preschool or kindergarten, is a big, I mean, I was, I'm not old, but I've opened up to where, to where, I remember, we had theater labs, with, I don't know if you guys remember the old Apple Macintosh computers that were various colors, and I always tried to get a green one, because that was my favorite color. Um, I'm moving along with you. Okay, yeah, well, I was just making sure that we're dealing with, um, so, so, yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is that, um, we, we are making progress. I, I also, in fact, in general, about, you know, for most of it, I think, also, later chat, especially this, we're, we're dealing with, ultimately, trying to use data, use, quantifiable measures to try and some ways to counter active emotional tendencies, and that's really, it doesn't matter what field you're doing, and, um, anytime you're going up against someone who feels or I think about something with deep emotional connections, you know, how do you try to, you know, help them see the real benefits go along, uh, for our school district specifically, but it tends to be in school district. When, you know, I think, how do you do that without evaluating how they feel, you know, I mean, someone's memories in school are important to them, very, very often, so, I don't know, it just seemed like an interesting type of thing.
Sometimes those memories are horrifying as well.
Absolutely.
We have difficulty getting some of our parents to come for parenting conferences because they have such a horrible memory of experience. And I, you know, the last comment I have about it is that I just think it's incredibly challenging for folks like you to do this. In education, we can probably do everything, and schools are really asked to do everything. We've become a total one-stop shop for a little bit of, everything for kids, from learning, social media, it's all related, on the job, training, what you name it, we're asking to do it on the days. But if we wanna do things well, we really have to narrow our focus, otherwise, we'll do everything very superficially, people get a generalist approach, but they won't actually get deep parting unless we focus our effort on what we think we're doing. So, and I think that's a challenge of you guys to figure out whether those priorities first, and focus on.
We need to, um, help the point of all of that, we need to be a jet, more creative, and, and I can, and then, I can, we would, you know, so far, it's just, it's not bad for us as a society to want to provide these things to people, I think it's, you know, I mean, it's not one group, it's various, but it's not a bad thing to want to offer that, and it obviously will, but, yes, I mean, it's, that's a lot of, someone whose job is educate, help people, but also think about, I mean, think about these new things that we do, psychology.
Very good. General word about that, it's, yeah. I think the thing about what was perhaps me was, after fourteen, when he just re-represented progress, he talked a lot about community understanding, but the one that struck me as being the hardest for us, that will take a long time to do, was community trust. You've had some negative experiences, and negative people that you've worked with in the past, it's difficult to trust the new ones, um, because you're anticipating the same things that you had before. But I think, um, as Mike pointed out, the decrease in open enrollment, albeit it's small, is a decrease. I think that that is part of building community trust. Didn't trust you enough before, but we are going to give it a whirl now. I continue to get calls from community people complaining about an item, a person, a situation, without looking at the big picture, and I think that, um, when he used Walt Kelly's quote of, we have met the enemy and he is us, I think we see that a lot. Public education does not look at customer satisfaction as being an issue for them to resolve. Many individuals feel that have all dangers, and you as the customer need to look at it the same way I do, which just needs to be the other way around. We need to look at the customer service point to build that trust, because we're gonna get to where we wanna go without creating the trust, and right now, we don't have.
I, uh, in this stage of Carter, and, you know, Mike and I have the common element of having grown up here, and having, uh, grown up at a time where there was a lot of influence in the community. Like Joe Carter indicates, like, in the seventies, the highest assess value of a person was, by that measure, you'd be considered the most, which it felt like, you know, as a kid growing up, and it looked like, as a kid growing up, and then to know what the changes through globalization and everything. We are, you know, today in a position where you have nine lowest assessment of a first student, and yet, I think through trust building and community collaboration, I know that I personally am really energized by the forward progress that has been made of the community in a lot of different ways, uh, trying to figure out pretty different ways to improve them, renew the infrastructure and the amenities, and housing, you know, opportunities for people, I think that's, uh, an interesting thing, because if you just sat back and dwell upon the way it was compared to the way it is, you never move forward, you continue to be stuck, continue to regress, but I can really sense, uh, serious momentum, you know, synergy within the community to bring back in a different way, uh, Marshall County is a great place to live, learn, work, and play, which I think is really exciting on the club side of that. You know, when you talk about how hard it is to change, I mean, little things like school calendar, all the different things, you know, and the fact that you can, to the nth degree, what's in the best interest of the kids, in terms of learning, that, that haven't taken backseat to the state fair, you know, for the career and talent, if you're a stronger calendar, and that's where I get it. I'll never forget, you know, uh, the first year that I was here, and, you know, we had had a committee work for an entire year, ladies, uh, developing, uh, proposal and rationale to move to year-round school, or to have that be considered, but only under the pretense that all buildings would be on that schedule, which were, which was impossible to do, to create a law that said you couldn't do it at high school, I guess. Um, so, I was interested in reading through those terrible twenties, or whatever they call them, because during my thirty-seven years as an educator, I pretty much seen all of those come at one time or another, and all of those excuses for why, you know, schools aren't maybe where they should need to be, but I think we're coming a long ways from that, and not, trying not to make excuses, and try to drop that, give the job, for all of kids. And the other thing, and I've said it before, is that, um, you know, I did not realize that the economy couldn't handle everybody going to college, you know, or growing up either, I just assumed most everybody, not everybody, but most aspired to do that, and, you know, knowing that back then, seven out of ten of our classmates would walk right into a job and have low wages, and, and now that's not possible unless there's some post-secondary attainment of, um, knowledge or skill, um, and that's a high bar to have to reach and get, and I think we're doing an ever better job of, of trying to get kids to get there, where seven out of ten have to have some more capable skill and knowledge, that's a huge difference for ladies.
You know, when you bring that up, we think some more progress, because I still clearly remember my freshman year of college, being almost identical, with the exception of world religion, when I was out of high school, almost identical to my, and yet, I mean, to the point where you could almost say, okay, yesterday, he lectured about this, or tomorrow, he lectured about that. I mean, the courses are identical, you can act on, and now these kids are coming out of high school, or high school, first two years of college, um, things are, they're paying a lot of money, and they're trying, they can be on, and I just think that that is huge innovation, and, we are making progress, but I think we have been very incremental.
Any closing comments? The next section is very long, the sections are very long. I would suggest that we do half of the, uh, fifteen, uh, page, fifteen three, four, five, so we did make the. Chapters fifteen through eight. Let's do the same and have everybody come for it. I'll say that, for example. If anything. Thank you. Moving on to politics.
Uh, two oh three point five, school improvement advisory committee, we have amended the wording to mirror what's in the high work code, and I would recommend that, uh, the board approve the first reading, and wait the second reading. Two oh three point seven, administration in absence of policy, we essentially amended that to say, uh, sort of having specific policy that, uh, it's different to not be able to make decisions and then to keep, as long as it was in line with the educational philosophy of education.
And I would change this committee's. I have a motion to amend two oh three point five, now one oh three point one, and two oh three point seven, and waive the second reading.
Go on.
Seconded.
Heighten the Guinness, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Motion here is six zero. Looking at the two policies that I had, two oh three point nine, has been renumbered on to two seventeen, um, and names of title changes, framework type changes, but nothing else was changed in that policy, so I would recommend that every market would do. Any objections to that? Moving on to two oh three point ten, uh, board self-evaluation, there was a change in, um, one of the lines, in the first paragraph, I think, um, board assessment was changed in evaluation, so that would probably lead to a better. Okay. Any items of note, Adam?
So, moving on, we're, people have these, I think, pretty incredible term up for the, the whole, that we've got less, um, actually, than Tuesday, um, it's, it was immensely impressive, I was really happy to see a couple of students even get out there and play a first couple of qualities, uh, we need, that was a huge project, and it was great to see that, I think we just got a couple more small parts of that project finished up before some standard completion, but that should be here, uh, later this month, so that'll be great, um, and as far as communication skill, I wanted to say, is let you all know that I am, you know, as talks with building administrators about the remind app, that you all become clear with your, uh, over the last couple of, uh, months, and it's, it's a great tool, and I know that our school buildings are looking very use of it, um, but I am gonna talk to our building administrators a little more about, um, how at the district level, what a plan to use it for things like snow, uh, snow-related, weather-related emergencies, and snow-related closings or delays, and, uh, what's maybe more appropriate to come from each building, uh, the buildings know their students, buildings and administration, the teachers know their students better, uh, you know, just on an individual or person by person basis, so just kind of making those two circles, circles of communication clear, and, uh, benefiting everybody in the district, both the folks sending the messages to the district, and the folks receiving them, how we believe in people. Very couple of, I have these, uh, for the STEM best grant, I was able to finally see some of the kids in action, I was able to get them paired up, looking at each other, interviewing each other, we have a, our, uh, blue group is, they're, they're a little more extroverted as a class, so it wasn't as hard to get them paired up and get them talking, and, um, that was really impressive, what I saw, I was also impressed by our regular, uh, class, Joe's, uh, classroom, uh, they're, they're a little quieter in general, but once we got going, once we got some topics that were of interest, there's really a lot of statement, you know, they were taking the advice, and they were using eye contact, all of that sort of thing. Meanwhile, we're continuing to build our skills with videography specifically, as well as those, um, interaction skills, that we, um, going to talk to local business teams.
Thank you. We've had two committees meet since last week, Matt, that week, any men? How are you doing today?
Uh, yeah, we met, um, and, uh, Dr. Ryan, he met me, he was kind of giving a voice to a lot of you folks about what it is, what our goals are, what sort of ideas, and then we broke into, um, smaller groups, um, and kind of met, you know, individual groups, and kind of talked about our different areas, and, um, I thought with some action stuff and some plans, actually, I don't know. It was a really good meeting.
You can get. Okay, the loud committee also next, um, Jan and Karina are in there.
I don't think that's my. Um, so, Rachel, and.
Get closer, you're right.
At the meeting, um, and we pretty much just kind of went over the history of, I was, I think you asked, and then we reviewed the, the ELO, um, alpha data, something, I don't know.
Anything to add, Ben?
Yeah, I was, um, you know, having five years of Marshall County, I, I was, I found it interesting that a lot of our ELL students have been, and this isn't longer than five years, you know, struggling to get to that level of proficiency, and we've been needing more on that, but we're also getting fewer ELL students of the younger ages, that, correct? Maybe we're more comfortable with what we're going to do. Um, I, I thought it was interesting, and they did have us break into small groups and analyze some of that, and we have places, you know, some classes that do especially well, maybe for, for. It was interesting.
And we see if I'm wrong, but, I mean, one of the challenges is that the state provides funding for five years to help support those students, but I think the research says that generally it takes around seven in order for students to reach that high professions, and so, uh, this district, uh, works really hard to do what we need to do, whether the funding is there or not, to get the kids to work in the.
Looking at reminders, we have a PSYAC committee meeting coming up November twenty-third, virtual, op-many virtual meeting in May, the rural community auditorium foundation meeting in April, and Sarah, you have two policies for next time. Our next meeting is November sixteen. What have we done today to make education better for the students at Marshall County?
Really more comfortable than I expected, I'm glad.
And do they answer?
There was no, oh, yeah, no, it's not a good subject.
Well, that happens.
Yeah, the whole, we've always been, we're talking about replacement, probably just been that, that's what we.
Did you stop this part of the first grade? Any items for future agendas? My quote for today comes from Big Lou. He says, "The way a team plays as a whole determines its success. You may have the greatest bunch of individual stars in the world, if they don't play together in a club, it won't be worth it, die." And we will add a new member to our team next time, so our team continues to change. Um, I would suggest a quick break before we start Dr. Shu's evaluation, and we'll go to the second, come back sometime in the evening, seven or five after, so we can start.